All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Yukon City Council Yukon Municipal Authority Work Session. We're tonight going to discuss capital projects and funding. And so I will turn it over to our city manager, Ms. Kretschmer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would like to talk about our capital projects that our Citizens Advisory Committee had put together a list and funding sources. We have had multiple meetings with our bond counselor and our financial advisor. And they have made some recommendations, some suggestions about several funding mechanisms. And for each one of those projects. We are presently continuing to apply for additional funds through ARPA as well as ACOG, as well as grants. Just a few updates that we have had on our capital projects. One of the things that was at the top of the list was streets and roads according to our survey. That was a top priority. These projects for streets and roads are project-ready. Our engineer knows all about them, they have provided costs, they know all the details. And we could, we could start immediately on those projects. We would like to propose that we have an election in February. That would be a geo-bond election. We will see results from that if it passes sometime in July and August. If, if it is approved and then some of the voters would, or all the voters would see that we are getting some projects done, some things that are greatly needed. And that would fulfill some of the survey requests that we had. A little bit later on Mitch or Joe Davis is our engineer is going to discuss what those pro, what those streets are and what the proposition would include because we have to list all of those specifically. Anytime you have a geo-bond election, you have to list all of the projects, 70% of those specifically on the ballot. Regarding our water sewer and wastewater treatment plant projects, we are still waiting on several funding sources, resources and opportunities that we have applied for. Some of those we will not know until probably January or February. We have applied through ACOG. ARPA may fund some of these projects. We're still going to try to get some of the county's money of ARPA. We have received our second half of the ARPA funds which totaled 4.9 million. But we still need more to do some of the projects that we're wanting to do. Again, we have been working with our financial advisor and our bond council. And they are helping us with researching additional funding opportunities. Right now, the Oklahoma Water Resources Board is taking application for loans. They have loans available. So we are going to be applying for a grant through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. One of the things about waters and sewer projects, if we did take a loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, we could not use geo-bonds to pay those off. That is not allowed. There are some other, some of the other projects that we talked about regarding the fire station, the library, the multi-generational community center, as well as the indoor aquatic center. One of the first things that we have to do is get some, get additional information on the costs. We have to hire an architect. We have to have drawings. So there's still some information that we have to have in order to put that to the, the community and to the voters to find out whether or not we can get that passed. We are looking at several funding, we are looking at the sales tax increase. But right now, we're concentrating on working with our department directors and getting all that information that we need for each one of those projects. So we will be coming to you soon on hiring an architect to go out for bids or to request proposals from architects to develop basic plans and, and conceptuals and construction costs. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. John Williams. John is our bond counsel and he is going to talk to you a little bit about the funding and geo-bonds and what we can and can't do and, and so on.
Yes, and I actually think Chris Dander, financial advisor, perhaps is best to go first because his information will be, I think, more useful to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we leave one for those that aren't here?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So it's, as you all know, we come here generally once a year, kind of go through your desk. So some of this you've seen, some of it's new. As it relates to the, kind of the CIP plan, we did have a bunch of meetings actually on, on this. And as it, as you kind of work through different funding mechanisms, whether it's sales tax financings or utility system revenue financings or general obligation bond financings, some of them fit better with certain projects and others just, they just, they just don't mesh together very well. As it relates to the different projects were on the CIP list, the ones that kind of match with the flow of the funds are the streets. I also say that streets are a pretty common thing to be funded by general obligation bonds just in the sense of it's a core function of government. It's also something that doesn't generate any revenue. So water and sewer systems often are paid by water and sewer revenues. If it's a turnpike, turnpike revenues might pay for it. But as it relates to city streets, there are no revenues associated with it. So it's pretty common to see those paid for with general obligation bond. So I've just got a presentation to walk you through kind of a 101 of general obligation bonds and then more specifically how that relates to city of Yukon. So the first page just talks about kind of the definition of a mill. I mean effectively, you're just taking whatever the debt service is on a general obligation bond and you're dividing it by all the property in town. And if somebody has a million dollar house and somebody else has a hundred thousand dollar house, that person that has a million dollars house pays 10 times as much as the person with a hundred thousand dollar house. So it's just a very equitable way to divide up the taxes. There's a table there on page one showing the different cities and what the levies are. Not all cities have property tax levies. In Oklahoma, in fact, Oklahoma is the only state in the United States where cities don't get any operational levy from property tax. The only way a city can implement a property tax is to pass a bond election and then you issue those bonds and that drives the tax rate. So you can't just go out and say, we want to have a tax of X, 10 mills, 15 mills. The only way you can do that is to go out and issue bonds. So the school district, they have an operational levy, they have a building fund levy. They also have what's called a sinking fund levy, which is what pays for their bonds. VOTEC has an operational levy, county has an operational levy. The only person that doesn't get any money, I say only person, but only entity that doesn't get any money from the property taxes that people pay is the city unless you have a bond issue outstanding. So back to those tables, Oklahoma City is 14.73. This is actually from the 21, 22 year. Their target's 16, so they're probably working their way back up to 16. There's always different variables, so sometimes you're higher than your target, sometimes you're lower, but they're targeting 16 mills. Tulsa's 20, Norman's 12.27, Broken Arrow, Lawton. A lot of these communities, back to the street idea, exclusively do streets or largely do streets with their app form. So Lawton, that's exclusively streets. More, I wouldn't say exclusively streets, but largely streets. Oklahoma City, John knows exactly what they spend it on, but streets are included. And so those are the, by population. And then to the right, you have more of the communities around Yukon.
So what's Bethany's now that they just passed some, do you know?
No, I, I don't know if it's, I'm sure it's gone up, it was 457.
Right, but they just passed one in August, wasn't it?
Yeah, and if they passed it in August, it wouldn't hit until next, there's a pretty big lag time before the tax, taxes actually hit.
So theirs is higher than that?
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
And Mustang's not on here, did they not?
Mustang doesn't, we did check and they don't have a, they do not, the city does not, obviously the school district does. So if you can kind of see the theme there, it's that 10 to 16, you know, and really I'd say 15, especially in the metro area with Oklahoma City's kind of setting the bar, theirs is 16 mills. So a lot of communities kind of follow suit and try to target and sometimes it's driven partly by what's the project. And so they'll be higher for a few years and then they'll be lower for a few years. So that's kind of.
Glad I don't live in Nichols Hills.
You know, yes, well, we can talk about that, but the interesting thing about Nichols Hills is they don't really have a sales tax base. There's one shopping center, we talked about that, I think.
So everything has to come from that.
And they've had a really successful, I mean, they've got a lot of, a lot of streets done, a lot of infrastructure done over decades by keeping that levy. And as we'll talk about later, I mean, once people are used to paying and just, it stayed there and, you know, it just, they pass it just like the school districts does year after year and come up with a new list. So on to page two, this is just the historic net asset valuation. Once again, there's really two figures. You're taking what the bond payments would be and you're dividing by the net asset valuation. So it's, this is one of the two very important numbers. So as you can see in 2000, the net asset valuation was 71 million and in 2022, that's 221 million. This isn't exactly right, but if you multiply that by 10, that's the market value of all the property inside of Yukon. So that would be 2,214 million approximately. Page three, you all do still have one general obligation bond outstanding. It was issued in 2015 for 6,885,000. You can see the final maturity is in 3126. The next page, page four is showing when those levies hit the tax rolls. So this year, it's 3.15, next year 2.88, then 2.75. Page five is the historical levy going back to 2005. So you can see it was as high as 15.43 and then it's been stair stepping down since. There are actually three bond issues issued over several years. And then in 2015, we refinanced them for some financial savings to the city. So on page six, kind of what we're here to talk about is this analysis, at least on the next pages too, is designed to provide a framework for a potential long-term general obligation bond issuing strategy with the city. The approach is based on the following objectives. Objectives, provide annual funds for projects throughout the city, including needed street upgrades, provide for short bond maturities on all bonds, less than five years, which will ultimately allow the city to maximize bond funds and minimize the interest expense and then maintain a tax rate at a constant relatively predictable level. Back to kind of a bond municipal, I think municipal, general obligation bond 101. One of the things, there's a lot more spec, very specific ways we have to do general obligation bonds versus like a sales tax revenue or utility system revenue debt. And it, and one of those things is when you issue general obligation bonds by state statutes, we have to have level principal payments. So it's always strange, you can't, like if you do a mortgage, you're going to pay a 30 year mortgage, you're going to pay a whole bunch of interest and very little principal on that fat first payment. And when you get to that very last payment 30 years later, you're going to pay a whole bunch of principal and very little interest. And that whole time, you're going to make that same payment for the entire time. With general obligation bonds, that's not allowed. You make the same principal payment year after year. So your first year, you have the same principal payment and you have a lot of interest and then next year a little less interest. And so every bond issue, you always have a smaller debt service payment every year as it progresses. And that's the reason you see school districts do a bond issue every year because what they're trying to do is maintain a constant tax rate. So what you have in the pathing is you have these debt service payments on the bonds going down and you have the net asset valuation growing, I mean just by inflation. And therefore that tax rate has two things making it stair step down each year. So as you flip to the next page, page seven, it folds out, there's a lot of small writing on there too. But I mean, this is the one that really shows, you know, what, what a long-term bond plan would look like. So if an election was passed, we'd recommend issuing 2.5 million dollars in 2023. So going across the top, those are the years the bonds would be issued. Going down the left-hand side, that's saying what year taxes would be levied on each of those issues. And so you can kind of see in 2023, that would fall off on the 2025 year maturity, maturity tax year. And at that point, another bond would roll on in 2026. So you take, you basically aggregate those all the way to the right and you can see where the estimated tax levy would be. So it'd be, it'd go up to 7.35, then 11.35. Ultimately, the target we were setting was 15, just in this scenario, once again to kind of tie out with what other communities in the metro do. Oklahoma City, more and Midwest city is less, but ballpark that area. So as it relates to the projects you're going to hear about tonight, instead of having an election year after year, you go out for an election for a number of years of bond issues. So you would say, okay. And in this scenario, we're talking about potentially 10 years worth of issues. So you would aggregate that and it's approximately 37 million, 37,500, I think. We've, we've got to kind of dovetail that in with the projects and there's variables there. We don't know what excess collection, I mean, people don't pay their taxes. So some years where we don't have enough collection, so there's an adjustment in here for delinquencies. But then you have everybody catch their taxes, so you have what's called a surplus. Interest rates change, the growth in the NAV change. So this is one of those where every year we recalibrate. Maybe we don't get the growth rate we expect. So in 2024, instead of doing 2.7 million, we do 2.6 or 2.5. It, it's interesting because I always say it's kind of like the tail wagging the dog. We're, we're going to constantly project what that levy is going to be in the next year and that drives what we recommend issuing each year and that changes every year. So that's kind of, once again, we went ahead and built this out for 20 years, but we're not saying, we're not recommending you would do that for 20 years. We're saying more of a 10-year plan that would get you approximately the money you need for these street projects. And then at some time in the future, for a future council, they could decide if they want to come up with another list of projects and try to extend that tax. So this is kind of the, the one that kind of, you can kind of see how the cash flows work as it relates to the next page. And I'm not sure if I asked, I mean, anybody have a question at that point? And John, if I leave anything out, pop in and let me. On page eight, this is just showing what the tax levies have been, what you've seen. You've been as high as 15.43. You see where it's stair stepped down, you can see where it would stair step back up to the 15 target. And then on page nine, you all, most of you all have seen this. Sometimes it's just good to get a more holistic or totalistic view. If you go across the top in 2006, the city of Yukon was at 9.36, school districts at 67.65, VOTEC at 16.11, or I mean the county's 16.1, VOTEC at 15.6. So the total levy was 108.72. And on a hundred thousand dollar house, that would have been 1,195.92. And you see what it's on 150, 200, 250,000 dollar house. So you can go down towards the bottom to this tax year 2022. And some of these, we don't have the most updated, but they're going to be very close. City of Yukon, 3.15, school districts, 73.04, Canadian County, 16.11. But it, 108.45, so, so very similar. And you see it's been up, it's been down along the way. Taxes, very similar, 1,192.95. So that's, if you had a hundred thousand dollar house, that's what the taxes would be. If you work your way down, you can see how they go up depending on what the city does. So eventually you go to 15, if it was up 15 mills, you're already at three plus mills now, so that's about 12 mills. Effectively, it would be about $10 more per month on a hundred thousand dollar house under this scenario. So kind of back to the beginning, I mean, the, the reason this works really well with streets, more so than other projects is as you can see, you're getting a defined amount of money each year, year after year. If you said, hey, we want 35 million dollars today to build whatever it is you need, you want to build, that levy isn't going to be 15 mills, it's going to go to 45 or 50 mills. And then it'd go 41, 39, 38, 37, you know, eventually go down. Nobody wants that to happen. So it, it just doesn't fit in with a, a massive single project where you need all the money day one toward the bid for the project. But with streets, it's very easy to say, we're going to do Garth Brooks Boulevard from first to third this year and they're going to go from third to seventh the following year. You can very much dovetail in street projects with general obligation bonds and that's why you see more communities do that. Questions? I don't know, I think I'll leave the rest to the, the way the election would be called and all that stuff. I mean, John, I normally talk about that, but you got John here, so I will leave, leave those to him to, to talk about in more detail.
Thank you.
Well, general obligation bonds provide a method by which municipalities and schools can finance really expensive things. Streets are really expensive. And trying to, to do, to reconstruct a street out, out of your operating budget, it would take years and years and years and years. So many cities use general obligation bonds and the funds are, are available on an ongoing basis for the life of, of the bond issue. Should you wish to call an election, it is a citywide vote of the people. Perhaps you'd want to call it for, for February 14th. If you chose that date, then it would be necessary for the city council to approve the documents calling the election on December 6th. And there's quite a bit of work that goes into preparing those documents. And then further, there's some, there's some things you have to do legally before the day of the election. So that's the path forward. Now, if you prefer to have the election in March, well, you'd have, everything gets pushed back a little bit. Further, if there is a general obligation bond issue, there's something called a Bond Issue Proceeds Act that says that at least 70% of, of the projects and the expenditure funds must be identified. And they'll be identified by you, the city council, in the resolution that calls the election. So everyone will know where that money is going to be spent, what the precise locations are. And voters will then make up their mind based on money going to those projects. And it really has to be spent for those projects. I'm, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about all this. Now further, you know, whether you call an election, that's your decision, that's the city council decision. What projects are in, are in the bond issue proposition, that's your decision. Further, when the election is called, that's your decision. Somebody asked me a question.
Okay, so how much are we asking for? Have we decided?
Well, 37,500,000 dollars is a working number. There's, there's, there's a basis for that. There's a project list that will soon be, I'm sure, available. It's not available now though. Is it, oh, it is? Okay.
Yes, it is. Joe is going to give us the project list.
Yeah, that would really be useful to, to look at the project list. Yeah. To have that, to have that discussed. Right?
Sir.
Joe? Okay. Well, let's do that. I think the rest of our discussion will be more useful if, if we know this. Okay?
Thank you.
I know. Nor you. Let's see, I think we may have some slides. Okay, so some of the projects we've been talking about for quite a while are included in the list. So this is kind of the overview of four of the hot projects we've been talking about. So we've been talking quite a bit about 10th Street that you can see on the lower. And it's basically a two mile stretch on 10th Street. Again, we've been talking about trying to do the improvements in there to take care of the development that we're seeing on 10th Street. That includes the signalization improvements through there that we've all been talking about that we need to do, the additional turn lanes that we've talked about. And again, it's looking at trying to take care of the capacity we're seeing right now. It really was hopefully brought to everybody's attention when we were talking about the recent development that was in this corridor and the amount of traffic that we're seeing currently in this corridor. So again, this is to address the existing traffic that we have and then to go ahead and take care of it for that, you know, 20, 25 year period. So when we're talking about a bond project that they were talking about, we want to make sure that the project outlives the bond life. So again, we're looking at a 20, 25 year life on, on these projects. The next project we're talking about is Garth Brooks. And we've talked about Garth Brooks, expanding Garth Brooks from 10th Street north to Vandement. In that extent, we've talked quite a bit about the need of a fifth lane, that the surface itself has pretty much deteriorated through there and that there needs to be some signalization improvements through there. The timing is fractured at the best, you know, that when you go through there, the platoons aren't marching all the way through, so you're getting hung, hung up by signals. The other thing we talked about was on the southbound to go ahead and do improvements from the Vandements, actually a little bit south of Vandement, but take it to all the way to Health Center Parkway, where we're adding an additional lane that would go ahead and be a right only into Health Center Parkway. Again, that goes ahead and takes care of the development that you guys are anticipating in that vacant property that goes ahead and is complementary to the Frisco interchange. So that pretty much takes care of that project. When we start looking to the north, we start looking at Yukon Parkway. And the city has identified Yukon Parkway for probably 15 years. It's made an application through ACOG trying to get funding for the improvements of the street. But as we've all recognized, that the street just does not score well enough on Yukon's point rating system. So with that, we're having to look at other ways to try and secure funding to do the improvements. Right now, it's a hodgepodge of two lane, three lane, four lane and asphalt and concrete. It's very difficult to drive through that road. So with this, we'd go ahead and do the improvements on a four lane to possibly, as we go further to the north, a possible three lane section as we get to the very end of the north. And again, once when we get up to Wagner Road, we start getting into that flood pine area and further north, there's really not much traffic going north of Wagner Road. So we'd probably look at trying to taper that down. And then we're talking about doing the improvements from Wagner Road from the recent improvements that were just done this past year. And then in doing And then in doing the same type of improvements as we go to the east for a mile. So those are the immediate projects that we've been talking about that would be included in this list. And again, we're happy to answer any questions on, on these four projects.
There's another slide.
Okay. So, thanks. So again, these are the slides I think we've seen. On Tenth Street. And, excuse me, this is Garth Brooks first. And again, that's showing that the lane configurations that we just talked about. The improvements that we've talked about with the additional fifth line. And again, this is the fifth line from the interstate going north to Vandement. So right now, it's a hodgepodge of dedicated left turn lanes. And instead of having that, we would go ahead and propose a five-lane section through there. And it will actually increase the ability to, for cars to keep on moving through, so they're not backed up into a current through lane of traffic. And this hopefully looks familiar from the recent talks we've had on Tenth Street. And again, we're talking about doing the signalization improvements. And again, we're ta- talking about the check hall interchange. At that interchange, we've talked about in the past that the need is currently there for the dual left-hand turns. We only have a single left-hand turn at this time. Traffic's dictating that we need to have those dual lefts, so there's quite a bit of improvements at that intersection. And then we've talked about as we keep on moving. To the west with all the development we're seeing there, as we were working with developers in that quadrant. We're still behind the curve on trying to take care of the improvements that need to happen on, on Tenth Street all the way through to Garth Brooks. And also you can see that we're, with this, we're including the improvements with the signalization at Tenth Street and Garth Brooks with this project. So does anybody have any questions on any of the four projects? I'm hopefully doing a little bit better than Mr. Williams, but apparently not on questions. So we, we are wanting to continue those updates because there's been some recent changes in the corridors and some of these corridors. So we are continually working on those prices, Mr. Williams. That's a really good question. So Wagner Road would probably be similar to the first section that we had on Wagner Road. And I believe that was a little over a million dollars. For the ACOG grant that we put in for Yukon Parkway, it'd be closer to probably about, about one and a half to two million dollars. And again, that's dependent on what we're looking at, the far north section and the drainage. But again, probably in that two million dollar range. Tenth Street. And again, there's a couple of issues that we need to go ahead and finalize there, but quite a few million dollars on that one. And again, that's where we're looking at some participation with some property ownership, which is gonna impact how we're trying to look at that, that fee. And then on Garth Brooks, will be quite a few million dollars on that too, so probably three to four million dollars on the Garth Brooks section. You're asking all the questions tonight, Mr. Williams. So probably, let's say in the ten million dollar range right now on just these four projects that have been identified. Ten million plus. And again, those are cost opinions right now. So again, we recognize there's multiple projects throughout the city for streets that need to be improvements. These are the four that council's probably heard the most about, probably in the last six months. And while there's other needs out there, we decided just to go ahead and present these right now because these are the ones that I think the council's most familiar with. Any other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you so very much.
I was trying to bring about a discussion of how the thirty-seven point five million dollars would be spent. So, so it's still a work in progress.
Right.
Okay.
But before we would go to election, we would have to have every one of those projects lined out.
That is correct. Seventy percent of the thirty-seven point five million must be identified. And we tend to do more than seventy percent.
How did you come up with thirty-seven point five?
I may not be the best person to answer that, but the, the Citizens Committee. Identified about twenty-five million dollars worth of projects. And then it's known there's some additional projects on top of that. And. It was thought maybe that was twelve million dollars, but it, that's, that's a work in progress.
But this thirty-seven point five million is just for road projects?
Yes, just roads.
Not all the other projects they've discussed? Okay.
Yes. None of the other projects that the Citizens Committee has discussed.
That's correct. They, we are looking at other funding sources and. Before we can really do any of that, we've got to find out what the cost is of everything. That's why we've got to go and find an architect. And move forward that way. But this is one that we can go ahead and move forward on and get progress.
Because every year that we wait, the cost goes up.
That's correct.
Can I interject something?
Mm-hmm.
I apologize.
That's all right.
Again, when we were talking about numbers, those were construction dollars, they're not total project cost. And I think what you're probably asking is total project cost, Mr. Williams.
That's correct.
So because of that, we have right-of-way, utility relocations, design work and construction admin. And I was probably just a little bit light on the, those four projects on the construction side. It may be closer to twelve million plus on that. But when you add the other additional cost on top of it, you're usually adding about forty percent on top of that base cost. So that gets us closer to that. John, you want to help me? That's probably eighteen million, probably around that number when we start adding in all those additional costs. And again, I was just talking, sorry, I apologize, I was just talking about the construction cost.
Okay, thank you. Mitchell, did you have something to add?
Yes, we actually do have a list of projects that we're gonna add to that. We've been working with team to come up with actual construction cost, which is gonna be a couple of weeks. But we do have a list, like we got First Street from Oak Avenue to Vandement. So we do have a list of projects that total about twenty-six million dollars. That was, that they come up with. So we do have that and we'll present that after we have our construction cost on the bigger projects. So, just letting you know, we didn't just come up with it out of the.
Right, right. Those are the smaller projects.
Yeah, there's Holly Avenue, there's Third Street, there's Kingston Drive, there's a lot of them that we've had a lot of issues with over the years and a lot of complaints that the. Council has received, so we've taken all those in consideration and we've actually scored those, so there's a score on some of those streets. That need repair. So it is something we just didn't decide. So, and we'll show the council when it's time for that. When we move forward and what those projects look like, so we can all score them together.
And hopefully we'll get some of the ACOG money so that we can do even more. It won't cost as much for us. Does anybody else have any questions? You want to talk again?
May I?
Yes, please.
My job is, is bond counsel and I ultimately sign the opinion that says everything that was done, everything that was done was done lawfully. And that the bonds are exempt from federal income taxation and also state income taxation. And a part of that, I'm a little bit of a policeman and I purposely tried to, to cause this, this discussion and debate about what the projects are. And do it as, we need to know that as soon as possible so it can be vetted and analyzed. Now, there's, there's plenty of time here. But that's, that's what I'm doing. I'm trying, and further, ideally for each of you to touch the projects. Of course, you have to know what they are. But they're still being developed. And when it comes time for the election, it's unlikely that this bond issue will pass. Unless there's strong support from the city council. So, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a failed election. Which is not a, not a good thing for the reputation of the city. So. What, if, 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 as you learn about these things, the, the, what's to be in, in the bond issue, proposed to be in the bond issue. And there's certain things you don't feel good about, well, let's talk about it until either you do feel good about it. Or maybe you won't. But i- in any event, it's possible for us as to work some, I, I would think something that everyone can say, yes. We really need that. And you have to believe we're really, we really need these things because the electorate will be looking to you for leadership. So.
Very well put. Thank you. We must be unified in this in order to get it to pass. Thank you. I appreciate those words. Okay, anybody else have any comments, questions for, anyone? All right. Anything? This meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene at seven o'clock for the city council municipal authority meeting.